Hello, hello. My fellow police officers. Gentlemen. You ready? Hello, if I can please ask everybody to stand so I can salute the flag. I'll have the clerk, uh...
Attendance.
Take the attendance.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Brown.
Here.
If we could ask everybody to kind of tone it down a little bit, please.
Counselor Judy Garcia. Counselor Tenary Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lopez. Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rick Cooperrow. Counselor Vito. Counselor DeJesus.
Present.
Counselor Haddelberg.
Here.
Counselor Melinda Vega. And Counselor Taylor.
Here.
You have eight members present, Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Can you read the call of the meeting, please?
The call of the meeting from City Clerk. Please call a special meeting of the Chelsea City Council for Monday, February 13th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the City Council Chambers, Chelsea, Massachusetts, 02150 for the following purposes: Pleasant allegiance, roll call of members, Boston Children's Choir, SCPS choral team, Chelsea Fire Department swearing-in ceremony, and the Chelsea Police Department swearing-in ceremony.
Counselor Rick Cooperrow moves to accept the call of the meeting under suspension, seeing no objections, so moves.
The first out of business will be the reading of a resolution from the Superintendent of Schools, a resolution that was adopted for the choir at Monday's regular meeting of the City Council by all members of the City Council.
Dr. Elmi Abada will read the resolution on behalf of the council.
Good evening, it's my pleasure to read this resolution, and I just want to say thank you to the City Council for honoring our students and our teachers in this wonderful event that we had, so I'm gonna go ahead and read the resolution. Chelsea Public Schools and the Boston Children's Choir MLK Day Concert. Whereas, on Monday, January 16th, 2023, students from Chelsea Public Schools celebrated the life of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King in the annual Boston Children's Choir Tribute Concert. And, whereas, Chelsea Public Schools connected its vision of ensuring diverse opportunities and pathways for its students by partnering with the Boston Children's Choir to harness the power of music and showcase the talent of their students. With the help of Superintendent Dr. Abada, BCC Executive Director Andres Holder, Dr. Erin Jennings, and Malik Hoson, Chelsea Public Schools was awarded the Hestia Fund Grant to bring to this opportunity to life. And, whereas, the students at the Berkowitz, Hooks, Kelly, and Sokolowski that participated are Angelina Ramos, Naomi McCaskill, Ian Manuel Villafranca, Danielle Cabrera, Elise Cassias, Ariana Dixon, Cristimar Hernandez-Lopez, Sarah Mesa, Manuela Olivara Martins, Gianna Rivera, Lilani Alvarado, Leanna Bonaventure Rogers, Juliana Wermeyer, William Baridas, Gianna Sosa, Antonia Solarte, Mariana Romero, Sofia Valades Nataleño, Mateo Umanzo, Kayal Rocker, Kalia Aguilar, Mila Vega, Lenia Palacio Suramires, Elizabeth Oudhak, Mohamed Amin Chobat, Melissa Scarborough Alvarez, Marcos Hadil Reyes, Abigail Pineda, Haley Medina, Andy Fuentes, Leoni Ellenberg, Alma Contreras, Kiara Vasquez, Abiassa Colindres, Marina Inacio de Luz, Hayden Barahona, Sofia Pineda Juárez, Alexis Imanueli, Chris Hernandez López, and, whereas, the Chelsea Choral Team was composed of educators, Allison Saif, Michael Benarski, and Dan Camino working with the Boston Children's Choir Team, with Executive Director Andres Holder, Irene Isqueria, Kenneth Griffith, Robert McFletcher, and, now therefore be it resolved, that the Chelsea City Council recognizes the extraordinary talent and time that the students and faculty has put to make this exceptional program. Thank you on the behalf of the City of Chelsea.
Well, the superintendent gets an A for being able to say so many names and get them very correctly, so thank you, Dr. Elmi. If you could go to the front of the podium, we can see if we can gather the young people up to take a picture. And the only other person I know that played that symphony all from Chelsea was Chick Correa, so that's a big milestone for our kids here in Chelsea.
Say it now.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President, I want to just thank all the children for your dedication, your hard work, your preparation for your great work that you did for not only your schools, your parents, and our city. You went out there, as Counselor has just said, you're already in a class of legends. Chick Correa was one of the greatest performers from Chelsea, and you folks have went out there and made us very proud, we are just so excited that you are here today, we honor you, we honor the students, the teachers, and the management that got them prepared for it, and this is just so great to have you in City Hall, this is your City Hall, and thank you.
Tenary. Can we ask all the folk who are involved in making this happen, come to the front? Yeah. All right.
We should have brought them pizza.
Well, thank you.
I just want to thank the parents of these beautiful children who did such a marvelous job for us and represented Chelsea the way it needs to be represented, thank you.
You want to speak?
Eh, igual que mi hermana aquí, quiero felicitar a los padres y a los chiquitines que están aquí al frente, you guys are amazing, give yourself a pat on the back. Yeah. Yeah. I am really excited for what you guys have accomplished tonight, but I am more excited about what you guys are gonna accomplish and represent in the future for our city, okay, so, congrats, guys.
Any words of wisdom over here? Well, all the, our young people here, we're gonna dismiss you so you can go home and do your homework. All right? And thank, and thank you for representing the city in the way that you have, I appreciate it. We're gonna take a two-minute recess. Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Yeah.
Yeah, the only one that's not here was Beth. Yeah. His wife.
You ready? Give him a gavel, Leo. Grab your attention, please. Gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to thank my colleagues for allowing me to call this special meeting to address the fire and police appointments. Normally, it's done during a City Council meeting, but we thought it was inappropriate to do it at a City Council meeting, we wanted to make the night about public safety, so therefore, that's why we called this special meeting to address police and fire. First up will be Fire Chief Lenny to bring his greetings and remarks.
Thank you, Leo. Good evening. I'd like to start by thanking the members of the council for once again letting us appear before you for this important ceremony. I always say this is one of my favorite tasks, bringing on new firefighters, and it's an important ceremony, both to commend these members for their hard work and their accomplishment, and to oppress upon them the awesome responsibility that is to be a firefighter in the City of Chelsea. An awesome responsibility to your fellow firefighters, and a responsibility to your community. And with that, I present the following members for their official swearing-in to the rank of firefighter. Walter Ramirez. Provisionary firefighter Ramirez is also a United States Marine Corps veteran, and you can clap. And we thank him for his service. Fire, uh, Provisionary firefighter Juan Gonzalez. And Provisionary firefighter Kevin Gomez. And I call upon the City Clerk to administer the oath, Madam Clerk.
Aye.
Aye. Juan Gonzalez.
Kevin Gomez. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Affirm. That will faithfully. That will faithfully. And impartially. And impartially. Perform all the duties. Perform all the duties. And coming upon me. And coming upon me. As a firefighter. As a firefighter. Of the Chelsea Fire Department. Of the Chelsea Fire Department. According to the best. According to the best. My abilities. My abilities. And understanding. And understanding. Agreeably. Agreeably. To the rules and regulations. To the rules and regulations. Of the Constitution. Of the Constitution. And the laws of the Commonwealth. And the laws of the Commonwealth. The Charter. The Charter. And the ordinances. And the ordinances. For the City of Chelsea. For the City of Chelsea. So help me God.
And now we'll have a brief badge-pinning ceremony to pin firefighter Walter Ramirez, his mom, Nubia Rodriguez. And to pin firefighter Juan Gonzalez, his mom, Lori Gonzalez. And to pin Kevin Gomez, his girlfriend Megan Bryson. And lastly, I want to give a special acknowledgement Deputy Chief of Training and Safety Edward McGary for all the work he does with all our recruits that you see before you. And on behalf of all of the members of the Chelsea Fire Department, I want to congratulate you on your appointment, and I challenge you to make yourself better every day, study, work hard, there's always something to learn, and to better yourself so that you can better your department, and thank you for your attention tonight.
We will take a quick two-minute break so that yous can take pictures with your families, all right? Council. Hello? Council members, please take your seats. It's all knucklehead over there. You can't hear. Huh? Let him stay over. We're just waiting for this group here. You put it over time? You set? Before I introduce Chief Houghton, I'd like to ask everybody if you could stand for a moment of silence for Jackie Phillips who passed away, longtime police officer here in the city, a friend of the people of the city. Thank you. At this time, we call on the chief to take over and present his men to the city and to my colleagues on the city council. So at this time, if Chief Houghton will come forward.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, thank you City Council President Robinson, Acting City Manager Ned Keith, and all the city councils who came out tonight. This is a fun day for me. Usually as a police chief or a police officer, you don't usually say you have fun, but tonight is a special night for me. I know Leo just mentioned the passing of Jack Phillips. Jack Phillips was my neighborhood cop. I grew up in Prattville. He was one of those officers who gave you tough love, smiled at you, talked to you. And obviously, I worked with him through 2002 when he retired. And it just makes me think that policing is really simple. He treated people with respect and dignity, and that's why I think he's a legend in our police department. So I told his wife tonight at the wake that, while they're at the wake, I would mention his name because he was a special part of my life growing up and as a police officer. So I'm glad I got to say that. It is true that it's pretty simple in policing. You just treat people with respect and dignity, and you usually have a pretty good career for yourself, as Jack did. So tonight, we're going to start off with our new patrol officers. I have a special connection to them because when I was sworn in by former city manager Ambrosino at 9:00 a.m. on October 7th, my first official act was to respond to payroll to see them all graduate the police academy. And obviously, I didn't know what I was doing. I had my new uniform on, but it was a special day, so I got to see the four officers who I'll introduce to you, and then we'll follow the same protocol as the fire department. So first, I'll call up Officer William Piper. Officer Mark Garcia, Garcia was also an active member. Officer Garcia is an active member of the United States Army, so he'd be thanking for his service. Officer John Cohen, also an active member of the United States Army. And Officer Kevin Clavio. Madam Clerk, we are swearing in ceremony.
Aye.
Aye. Mark Garcia. Do solemnly swear. And affirm. That will faithfully. And impartially. And perform all the duties. And coming upon me. As a police officer. Of the Chelsea Police Department. According to the best. Of my abilities. And understanding. Agreeably. To the rules and regulations. Of the Constitution. And the laws of the Commonwealth. The Charter. And the ordinances. Of the City of Chelsea. So help me God.
Now I call on fellow Chelsea Police coworker and fiance of Officer William Piper, Lydia Coco, to come up to pin William, please. I'd like to call Officer Garcia's girlfriend Ariana Escalante and his father Roberto to stand by and watch the pinning, please. What you'll hear many times tonight, there's many legacies in the Chelsea Police Department. Tonight's the first pinning will be Officer John Cohen pinned by his father Sergeant Miles Cohen. Officer Cohen's great-grandfather was also a police officer in Manchester, Massachusetts in days past. So Sergeant Cohen, to pin your son's badge on, please. I call upon Officer Kevin Clavio's father Harold, who will be doing the pinning, along with his mother Angela Norina, who will be joining the father for the pinning. Your patrol officers are dismissed, and we will move on to Sergeant.
We're going to let you take. We'll take a two-minute recess so they can take some photos with their families. All right, we'll tie you. Had a long day yesterday. No, I met up with my daughter, my grandkids, and yeah, we went to the bar. A lot of her friends. It was unbelievable. I go on a couple times with a couple other people I know, but nothing like this. Tried out my daughter, about 10 o'clock drinking champagne. Thank you, thank you. If we can get the chief to come back.
All right, welcome back. Now we're going to do the ranks of sergeant. There's two sergeants, so I'm going to speak briefly on them. There's a little more knowledge, obviously, than the new patrolmen. First Sergeant Paul McCarthy. I've known Paul. Please stand up, please Paul, come up forward. Paul and I go way back. Paul and I worked together back at the old Chelsea Housing Authority days when he was the Public Housing Director of Security. A lot of people don't know, and the Chelsea Housing Authority has a great reputation, but I was lucky enough to work with Paul during all these new innovative programs, which a lot of offices actually live in housing now. You can go back to Paul's days back in the Housing Authority that got that program going. Paul traveled the country as a National Spokesman of FAHUD on safety in public housing, which I was happy to tag along with. We had some good times. Paul is an officer that just loves being a police officer, and it shows every day. I think one of his proudest moments is obviously his son Tim being on the job. So I'm very proud to see Paul make the rank of sergeant, and I'm sure he'll climb the ladder even further. So thank you, Paul. Next, if we could have Sergeant Michael Noon step up. Again, I'm honored. All the promotions tonight, I have some inner knowledge. I've been lucky enough to work with Sergeant Noon, then Detective Noon, and detectives for several years. I was just speaking to one of the councilors about, like, how did crime really go down, like, years ago? And Sergeant Noon lets his deeds do his actions. He doesn't look for any type of acknowledgement. But just let me tell you, back in the early 2000s, we had 135 shootings. We had, I'll think, 11 homicides in one year, shootings every night. Mike Spear headed a group with the ATF that took over 30 hardcore gang kids out of the city. That was the beginning of the city's turnaround. I actually wrote in the notes tonight, Council of Hattlerburg, this sergeant is one of the main reasons. You never look for accolades, you've probably never even heard of him until tonight, but this sergeant was, Spear headed that effort and has made this team look better. So we'll have the city clerk do the swearing in.
Aye. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties. And coming upon me. As a sergeant. The Chelsea Police Department. According to the best. Of my abilities. And understanding. Agreeably. To the rules and regulations. Of the Constitution. And the laws of the Commonwealth. The Charter. And the ordinances. So help me God.
Okay, we will have the pinning of Sergeant Paul McCarthy first. His girlfriend Tracy will be doing the pinning, accompanied by his son Officer Tim McCarthy and daughter Jennifer. And before I bring Sergeant Noon's wife Merle up, I forgot, I neglected to say Sergeant Noon's dad is a retired Massachusetts state trooper, so he also has a legacy of law enforcement. So if we can call up Michael's wife Merle, his wife, to do the pinning.
We will take a two-minute recess so that your families can join you for pictures.
We will take a two-minute recess so that your families can join you for pictures. Have the chief come back.
All right, good evening again. We're moving up, uh, the ladder of, uh, rank. Now, it's time for our two new lieutenants. Uh, first, I'll call upon, uh, Lieutenant Paul Marchese to come up. Just a few words about Paul. Uh, Paul's definitely a young rising star in the police department. Another legacy, his dad, I know he's gonna be here some, somewhere, who I worked with for years, and his brother also, and his mother Sue, like, uh, living up off of, uh, near Volk Park. Paul is just, like, very detailed in his job, he's, uh, trains most of our officers, he's in our honor guard. He, uh, like, you can tell, I've been here for thirty-seven years, you know who's gonna rise to the next level. Paul's risen rather quickly. Uh, I know there's a captain out there, I guess they're all looking for you to retire, Billy. Or other captains, but...
Yeah.
Yeah. But again, Paul does the training, he's, um, you know, he's also a union official that I deal with, and I respect his opinion when we have to have dialogue, 'cause obviously I'm new at this position. I was, he was defending my rights as a union member not too long ago. But again, he's a rising star, and I'm just proud that knowing someone who's a fellow Pope John High School graduate like myself, uh, has risen to this rank. So, uh, thank you, Paul. Thank, thank you, Leo. Um, next is another, uh, officer up to sergeant, lieutenant, that I have intimate knowledge, worked in several years in the detective bureau with. Uh, as a side note and a historical reference tonight, uh, Lieutenant William Bezuela is our first, he was our first sergeant, and now our first lieutenant of, uh, Central American heritage, uh, from Costa Rica. I know, um, many always wanna see, uh, how our department reflects the community, and, um, Lieutenant Bezuela is, uh, like, again, another rising star. Another unassuming, smart individual who solved more crimes than any of you could know of with his, uh, detectives who are sitting over there, all well-dressed, uh, on the right, on the right-hand side. Uh, and in my times, uh, I was in CID as the commander since two thousand and seven before my appointment, and I was lucky to have Mike Noon and all the detectives over there. But Will, you tell him to do something, and he, he had the detective's mind, he knew who to contact, he has a great rapport with not just the community, his fellow officers, but colleagues that you have to have rapport with, like the state police, the DEA, the FBI. Uh, again, another rising star, these two here will, um, before I leave or shortly after I leave, I know will both be captains, and, uh, and Will, again, like, I know people always talk about, they don't see people that reflect the community move up the ranks. We do have a, a person in everybody's view now to see that it does happen, and we're proud of him.
Aye.
Aye.
Paul McCarthy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear. And affirm.
That I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties. And come it upon me as a lieutenant of the Chelsea Police Department.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My abilities.
My abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
To the rules and regulations.
To the rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
Of the Constitution.
And the laws of the common law.
And the laws of the common law.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
City of Chelsea. So help me God.
So, uh, for the pinning, first for Lieutenant Marchese, I believe we're gonna have his, um, father, Ed Senior, uh, come up, along with, I know, his mother Sue. And his, I'm sorry, most importantly, it's, uh, Paul, his girlfriend Caitlin, to also come up.
Is that 'cause he went to Pope John?
I think the father went to Pope John too, Ed Senior. And for, uh, Lieutenant Wilbur Bezuela, his mother, Lillian Santiago, will be, uh, doing the ceremony. All right, we're gonna move on to the rank of captain, uh, since there's only, uh, one, and we'll just move the ceremony along. So, uh, Captain Thomas McLean, can you please approach the front of the hall? All right, Tom is also, uh, a US Army veteran, so we also thank him for his service to the, the country. Tom, now Captain McLean, has also risen through the ranks rather quickly. He's also has a law enforcement heritage, his brother, who cannot be here tonight, is a, uh, police officer in Winneham. So, uh, again, you can see a common theme that, uh, it runs through the bloodline. If anybody knows Tom, he's always the best dressed in uniform. I have to tell a funny story, 'cause I think it's the funniest thing in the world. I don't know if anybody can tell the difference in badges later, but I went to get my new badge as chief, very proud, and I went to a uniform supply house, and the woman asked me, "Do you want regular gold or McLean gold?" And I said... I go, "I'll take the fool's gold for twenty dollars less, please," and that's what I did, so... But, uh, Captain McLean is gonna be assigned to the administrative division. It's a division that is probably unheralded, because it's a lot of, uh, policies, uh, but it does set the direction of the department, uh, with equipment, training, uh, ensuring, which he's trying to do, a fair process for everybody to get access. Um, there's no one I can see better in that role than Tom. There's no question we'll have the best uniforms, the best equipment, the best cars. I don't know if Lydia's still here, we'll have to check the budget, uh, for us, uh, but it's, again, he started his career at another agency, some, uh, previous have, uh, he was a transit officer. Uh, but again, his military, his family upbringing, he's another former union official that I would have to, in a very short period, had to deal with him, but always had the officers' backs in, uh, trying to do what's best for them. So, again, he'll be a right-hand man to me with Captain Dana, Captain Betson, uh, Captain Dunn, so, uh, great accomplishment for Captain McLean. And the city clerk will now do the swearing in.
Aye, Thomas McLean.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
And affirm.
And affirm. I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
And come it upon me.
And come it upon me.
As a captain.
As a captain.
Of the Chelsea Police Department.
Chelsea Police.
According to the best.
According to the best.
My abilities.
Abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
Agreeably.
Agreeably.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Of the Constitution.
The Constitution.
The laws of the common law.
Laws of the common law.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
For the City of Chelsea.
For the City of Chelsea. So help me God.
Now, I call up his wife, Noel, who'll do the pinning, along with his daughters Emily, Kaylee, and Julie, to accompany her to do the honor. Thank you. Before I turn the mic back over to the President of the City Council, I just wanna thank all the officers who showed their support, who were here off duty. Uh, the department is changing, we're getting younger, we're, we are, we are getting younger as an old person, uh, but I think we're going in the right direction. We have excellent leadership, I think I gave you a brief little blurb on each of them. Each have a unique way that'll progress our agency to the way that, uh, the city council, who represents the community, would like, and, uh, I'm very proud of that. So thank you all, and congratulations.
We will, we will take a two-minute recess, so the last three can come back and take pictures with their family.